He's narrow-faced.
On your turn.
Okay, well folks, we're on the air and I want to welcome all of you this evening. We also have a couple great special presentations too, but before that, would you like to join us in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary, roll call.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Callen.
Here.
Copskis.
Here.
Here. Okay, and first, our first special presentation is from the Police Department, and Chief Latanzio, would you like to come forward?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's my pleasure to award Officer John Beckwith with the Life Saving Medal. On the evening of February 27th of 2014, Officer Beckwith and his recruit were dispatched to what was described as a suspicious circumstance. During the course of initial contact, the subject produced a concealed handgun and brought to Officer Beckwith and the recruit's attention, telling them, "Don't be alarmed." Officer Beckwith seized the firearm and directed the recruit to secure the pistol in the patrol vehicle. As he left the subject armed, the subject armed himself with a large butcher knife, stating, "I'm just going to kill myself." The subject made a movement with the knife as if to stab himself, and Officer Beckwith interceded in what was perceived as a subject's attempt at suicide, receiving a minor cut in the process. The subject later told Officer Arden to pass on his apology to Officer Beckwith and added, without Officer Beckwith's quick reaction, "I would not be here today." Officer Beckwith distinguished himself and the Albany Police Department with his media and courageous actions to save this distraught male from his own suicidal actions. I'd like to first give him this plaque, and the plaque says, "Life Saving Award Presented to Officer John Beckwith, honoring his selfless and humane action in saving the life of a distraught suicidal male attempting to stab himself in the chest on February 27th, 2014." Congratulations.
And this here is your certificate?
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
All right, well, thank you so much, Officer Beckwith. That had been such a very intense situation, and most people in our community do not really realize what our law enforcement does daily out there for our protection and for protecting all citizens. And it's very, very challenging type position, and we greatly appreciate all of our law enforcement and our law enforcement here in Albany, and we want to thank you so much for your service. Thank you. Okay, all right. Next is our Historic Preservation Awards, and Planner Anne Catlin, she has a presentation for us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Mayor's going to come down, and I'm going to go through a slideshow of our Preservation Awards for this year. We enjoy this month, May is Preservation Month, and we end May with awards of projects that we've noticed going on in the community that have really added value and kept Albany a special place. So our first award is to the United Presbyterian Church of Albany for restoring all of their Povey Brother stained glass windows in their sanctuary, and this was truly a group effort, and I can see a lot of men in the front row that were in some of these pictures, but the church congregation members helped remove the windows, and then Jeff Senders did the restoration work on the stained glass, and one of the photos shows broken pieces, so this is a really labor-intensive project. But the Povey Brothers are very famous for their stained glass, they're out of Portland, and they're very well-known in the Northwest for their stained glass, so quite a treasure to have two churches with these windows in them. And these are some during photos, and there's Jeff working on a window, and then you can see one of the stained glass windows after, but it is a really important piece of our history, and it's important to maintain the windows so that they can be here for another hundred years, so we appreciate your efforts, and so with that, you want to come up, share anything? If you could come up, somebody, if somebody could come receive their award on behalf of the group, that'd be great.
Thank you very much. And we have with us tonight also Jeff Senders, who is custom stained glass here in Albany. He did all the stained glass taken apart, cleaning, and putting back together again. Remarkable job. Paul Davis, a contractor next to us, the windows had not been out of the building for over a hundred years, and Paul's the one that engineered getting the building, the windows out. Then we had Hal Shalas, and Ben Harrison, and I, and about ten others, were the grunts. So we got them out and back in again, there's one more panel to go. We didn't, remarkable, I think. Really held our breath on that. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
So our next award is to Melinda Sorti, and she found a bungalow that really needed a whole new lease on life, and you can't tell from these photos, I apologize, the light, and I don't have a lot of good before photos, but there had been substantial water damage to this house, and most of the water damage on the exterior you can see is removed in the top-left photo, but the whole interior got upgraded as well as the exterior, so the photo on the right and then below are the final result, but they just, you just can't see how nice it looks, and it really does make a big difference to give another hundred years or more to these homes, and it takes a lot of work to do that, so we really appreciate it. Okay, well, these are my neighbors. We have Kenneth Armstrong and Cherie. They were one of our rehabilitation grant recipients, and they applied for a grant to restore some of the front porch. Well, this was just not your, you know, a couple of stair treads, as you can see in the photos, this was really every element of the porch, the stairs, the balustrade, the newel posts, and they did a remarkable job. And then they also took the, this is a Queen Anne that was white, and painted it with a much more appropriate paint color scheme, which you, again, can't see very well in the photos, but it's just a, it's an amazing difference in the before and after, and they really went above and beyond on their grant project and spent a lot of time, and it looks really, really nice, and we really appreciate their work. This is in the Hackelman District, too, where we really, every extra step makes a big difference, so thank you. I don't see Thad and Shannon here, but Thad and Shannon Olivetti have transformed some of downtown, and you may know where the vault is, but they also worked on another building on First Avenue in the 400 block, and they took off what we call the cheese grater siding in the left photo, and restored the storefront back to a more appropriate appearance, and it just makes a really big difference, and it was a lot of work. They've also put that whole space back into usable, functional space, and it wasn't really adding a lot of value to the downtown, so we wanted to recognize them for their efforts, but I don't think they're here tonight. So this is another one of our favorite projects, and this is still works, however, this is moving so quickly, we can't wait till next year to give them an award, but this is an award to Ryan Schuman and Dylan Williams of Old House LLC. They have taken what was probably one of our bigger eyesores in the Hackelman District, and it's amazing when ownership changes hands, but you can see in the top-left photo and the bottom photo, which was actually a picture of a, I used for an example of what not to do with a porch remodel, but they uncovered a couple of layers of inappropriate alterations and are putting back windows that are appropriate to the house style, and this is one of the oldest houses in Albany, it's, we think it's from the 1860s, late 1860s or early 1870s, and we believe it is a Hackelman house, and this is in the Hackelman District, and it's probably in one of our blocks that needs the most help, and we are so grateful for this project, and one of our Landmarks members lives around the corner and noticed it, and we wanted to catch them, it's not quite done, but I think you can see that it is, it's a big difference already, and it's going to look great when it's done, so we wanted to recognize them this year for in works, and we can tell it's going to be another really substantial project for this neighborhood, so thank you, so if you guys could come up. Well, the photos aren't very good here, and I don't see these folks here, but there were a couple fires in the Hackelman District and around in the historic areas, you may remember that, the arson fires, well, there are also some other fires that were not arson fires, and we did lose a house in the Hackelman District, and this is a house in the 600 block that we didn't lose, but this fire was in December of 2011, and it sat vacant until just recently, and it, some out-of-town folks bought it, they gutted it, and it was Tarp City, it looked awful, and we actually looked at this house, and thank goodness we didn't have to buy it, because we wouldn't have ever finished it, but the inside completely charred everywhere, they had to get a whole new roof system, truss system, very extensive, and I want to recognize one of our Landmarks Commissioners, Larry Preston, who pulled together a volunteer team to really help them get going and make it affordable. They did pay for a lot of work, but this house is no longer Tarp City, and it, you can't tell because the photo, but, you know, they have a whole new roof, and it is actually, they're moving into the house now, and so I think they're planning to repaint it, but they've been focusing on the interior, and it was one of those houses where if somebody didn't come along soon, it would have, it would not have survived another winter, I don't think of water damage, so we're really happy to see this house still standing, and thanks to the Fire Department, too, for a quick response on that, and we'll, I'll get that in the mail to them, I don't see them here, but. That was Jamelle and Gerald Fritz. And that concludes our presentations, but I did want to acknowledge our Landmarks Advisory Commissioners, they're appointed to serve as volunteers, and it's a really important aspect of keeping Albany Albany and what makes us unique and special, so if you could please stand, and I just wanted to give you all a round of applause, we have a really good group here. I appreciate their work, and we're trying to come up with some new ideas and keep Albany looking nice. Thank you.
I want to say, too, that I really appreciate your fixing up my neighborhood.
And I'm glad Anne did recognize our Landmarks Advisory Commission, because they do spend a lot of hours, you know, reviewing and the applications that come through for any sort of modifications, and also the policies that, that we, you know, set, you know, our Historic Preservation by, so really appreciate all of your hard work. Also, Anne, your hard work also on our, you know, the Landmarks Advisory Commission, and also for all of our Historic Preservation, I know Anne spends a lot of time, you know, as our city planner, really looking out over our historic stocks, so that we're all proud of in Albany, so. I do want to recognize, though, Jeff Sender, because Jeff, you know, you are very talented in restoring stained glass, and it is quite the artwork, and it's a very skilled-type job that you have, that it's not anybody can just pick up that line of work and be able to do the craftsmanship that you do, so we're fortunate to have you in Albany to be able to restore these windows. So thank you for your service and really restoring those windows, but.
I'll jump in all second about Jeff, he's actually done a window for us at our home, and if you've never had the opportunity to watch how he does some things, peek in and ask if you can actually watch him for a few minutes on doing some stuff, it's quite amazing.
Yeah.
Did you pay extra for watching?
Quite talented.
Yeah, I probably did.
Oh, I know. But thank you, Jeff, thank you for that service, so yeah, so thank you, folks, thank you for attending, but. Okay, that was it, Anne, all right, thank you. Next is Business from the Public, and I think there might be some of the folks here that's over the agenda item that we have over the Valley View Drive, Crocker Lane, Bloom Lane, and what I'll do is ask first from, if there's anybody else from Business from the public that wants to bring an item forward, and then I think after we have our engineer do kind of the report, then I'll ask for comments on this application, in case there's something that might be, your questions answered through his report, or there might be questions that you might have. So is there anyone from Business from the public that doesn't have an item that's a part of that local improvement district that'd like to come forward? Okay, all right, not seeing anyone, so then Gordon, were you wanting to come forward and do that, do the report for that resolution?
My name's Gordon Stephens Meyer, I'm a civil engineer with the Engineering Department here at City of Albany, and assuming that this project moves forward, I'm going to be assigned to shepherd the project through the LID process. Tonight, we're just asking you to consider the resolution that would create an engineer's report and financial investigation to see what the road projects would cost and what possible assessments the properties might have. You can still decide to not do anything, so this resolution simply gives us the go-ahead to come up with numbers. I believe you're all aware what we're talking about here, that's Valley View Drive, Crocker Lane, and Bloom Lane in North Albany. I could reiterate what the issues are, but I believe you're all aware, I can just take any questions you might have.
There's a question, Rich.
On Bloom Lane, is there an issue with any of the drainage now? Anything that a drain is about to fail, the sewer's about to fail, something that it needs dug up for some reason other than?
No, there's nothing wrong with the sewer system, I think the water line is, my understanding, it's fairly old, but there's, it's not falling apart, and there is a storm drain system there that's in place, it's currently draining some other subdivisions that would be quite easy to tie into it and use it for Bloom Lane itself, but it drains a couple of subdivisions to the north through Bloom Lane down to the subdivision south of there.
Issue is, do we have to, I mean, is there something about to fail, so do we have to repair something? If we don't have to repair something, as you see from the number of people and from the evidence given to each counselor, pretty much everybody there says, "If it ain't broke, let's not fix it," and I would agree at that point. Anyway, thank you.
Question, Jim, Bill, then, Dick?
The, I'm all, I don't have a problem with putting together a report and bringing us back the options and the financial impact and so forth and so on, but I would agree with Rich, I'd have to see some awful compelling reasons to proceed with an improving of a dead-end street that the residents are not interested in having done nor paying for, so, but certainly the report would be good information, and like you say, we're not committed to doing that work, that'll be a future decision.
Right.
Yeah, I think I know the answer, but would you like to review for us how streets here in Albany get paid for when we, when we create streets?
Normally, in a normal situation, you might have an open grass field that a subdivision, or developer wants to build a subdivision in, and then he goes out there and with city-approved plans, he builds a brand-new street, and then he sells lots, and the people in the subdivision buy the lot, and part of the cost of that lot is the cost of the street and the water line and sewer line in front of their house. That's normally how streets get built. When it's an old street, it's a little more difficult.
Yeah, that's normally the way streets are done now. My history on the council goes back into the 70s, and back in those days, we had a lot of LIDs, and LIDs, I'll have to admit, are paying for the homeowner, they're paying for the engineering department, they're paying for the city council, but do you want to explain to us how a street gets paid for with some LID?
Well, basically, we come up with a overall cost for the street, and the funding can be partially through assessments or completely through assessments of the property owners of the city, where to find money elsewhere, we could possibly share in the cost of building the street, but my understanding is, we build a street, we get a total cost, and then we assess the property owners, the cost of building the street, and they have various payment plans that they can go through to pay their share.
And my understanding is, and tell me if I'm wrong, is that in the case of residential streets, it's the benefited property owners that pay for their section of the street. If it's more like a arterial or a semi-arterial, then the city picks up the extra cost for the extra sizing of the street, but the benefited property owners still pay their fair share. So all of us here, I think, either us or the people that owned the properties before we did, paid for their street and sidewalk, sewer, and that stuff. Just wanted to make that point, that essentially, people here in Albany have paid, I think Floyd may be disagreeing.
For Floyd had a comment?
No, I don't disagree that that's how streets normally get built. Just want to point out that this is currently a county road, as I understand it, has not been turned over to the city.
I, my, I believe it is a city street, I might be mistaken, but I.
I don't think so.
Okay.
It was in existence before annexation, so it would still be under Benton County, technically, I think, for control.
So there are different classes of streets, there were public streets, private streets, and then there's a third, and I can't remember the classification, depending on the classification at the time of annexation, those, some of those streets did transfer to the city, and I believe Bloom Lane is under city's jurisdiction, because it's, I don't recall it being part of our transfer letter of understanding that we have with Benton County, so it is a, under city jurisdiction.
Who converted it from gravel to oil mat? Did we do that work?
That I don't recall. I'm fairly certain, yes, we did, are we, either we did or we paid to have it done. So some of the history on Bloom Lane is, it, the properties along Bloom Lane have partitioned off, so I don't know what the original count of the number of lots were. It's 12. Okay, and so those lots have been partitioned off and sold and developed, and the city, as those developments come in, we have two options, we can say, "Well, you can't develop until you bring the street up to urban standards," or what we did on Bloom Lane, because that would be an extreme burden for one property owner to do, and they wouldn't really be able to partition their lot and sell it, so we allowed them to sign what's called a petition and waiver, so that at the time the city council determines that it's timely to make the improvement, those properties have signed away their right to remonstrate against the project, because there was a development that was granted in return for that waiver. And you do have this letter here, I think, signed by 15 different property owners, eight of those properties have petition waivers filed against them, so they cannot legally remonstrate. Now, if someone, if council decides we don't really want to improve Bloom Lane, because we don't want to make the property owners pay, and the next property comes in to develop, you know, staff again, our choices are, we make that developer improve the road, or we take a petition and waiver, and if we're going to take petition waivers that are never going to be enforced, we have a, you can't have a situation where you have a lot of properties served by a road that never gets improved. So that's kind of the tension and the challenge here of allowing development to happen without putting these barriers up, saying, "No, you've got to make the improvement as you, as you get the benefit of partitioning property."
If I could throw in my two cents on this, I, over the course of many years, I've seen this phenomenon happen over and over again, where we do precisely what Mark said, where the city will say, "All right, we're going to grant the permission to go ahead and allow development, so people realize greater value from their property," and someone down the road will pay for it. And inevitably, the people who, you know, when the time comes to build the road, everybody goes, "No, wait a minute," you know, and I, either I forgot that I signed that petition, or I didn't sign it, the person who I bought it from signed it, and it becomes very, very difficult for the city to be able to create the road improvement. And while it's not, probably not an issue right now, it's a dead-end road, it's not serving a large number of people, but sometime in the future, somebody's going to want that road fixed, and they're going to come to the city and say, "How come you don't, you're not taking care of my road?" And the answer's going to be, "Well, you never improved it," and I think that's kind of what Commissioner, or Counselor Olson was trying to say.
Driving at me.
Is that sidetracked. We, you know, most of us who buy in the city have paid for in one way or another a fully improved street in front of our homes. Now, having said all of that, this is a policy decision of the city council, but bear in mind, it's one that city councils have wrestled with in every city I've ever been in, and occasionally they do, you know, they sort of say, "All right, well, we don't, we'll kick this can down the road and let some future generation of city councilors deal with the issue of whether that road needs to be fixed."
Continuation. After our last meeting, I drove up there and took a look and walked part of the street and looked at the proximity of the houses to the mature trees, and I came to the conclusion that I think if we move ahead of Bloom Lane at all, it needs to be something other than an urban standard, and we talked about urban standards, rural standards, one, because of the potential maximum loading that we see there, and our transportation plan doesn't call for it ever to go over and hook up to Broadway, and two, the landscaping and the trees are pretty mature, and some of those houses are pretty close to the right-of-way line, and for people who live on unimproved streets, often the right-of-way line is not the edge of the yard that you maintain, the right-of-way line is closer to your front door, and I was talking to Brian, and that's, I think, the case on his lot, that he actually mows grass out into the right-of-way quite a ways. So in any event, if Bloom Lane comes in for any form of improvement, I don't think it should be an urban standard, I think there are elements of North Albany, because the topography, drainage, soils, and this subdivision originally would have had been platted in Benton County with less-than-standard right-of-ways that we require now, so if we were trying to try to impose what is our existing standard, we would be looking for additional right-of-way, and that right-of-way would be pushing back up against people's houses that have been there for many, many years, so. As with Bill, I think the engineer's report simply defines a scope, a potential cost, and how that cost may be distributed, and does not commit the property owners at this time, nor does it commit the council to put them on the hook, but if it does move forward, I for one would request that staff look at a local street rural design as opposed to an urban design.
My, my whole concern about this is, it appears that everybody on the street doesn't want it done. Well, they're the ones who, if it's a dead-end street.
drainage, soils, and this subdivision originally would have had been platted in Benton County with less-than-standard right-of-ways that we require now. So if we were trying to impose what is our existing standard, we would be looking for additional right-of-way, and that right-of-way would be pushing back up against people's houses that have been there for many, many years. So I, as with Bill, I think the engineer's report simply defines a scope, a potential cost, and how that cost may be distributed, and does not commit the property owners at this time, nor does it commit the council to put them on the hook. But if it does move forward, I for one would request that staff look at a local street rural design as opposed to an urban design.
My, my whole concern about this is, it appears that everybody on the street doesn't want it done. Well, they're the ones who, if it's a dead-end street, if you don't make the stop at the end, and you go in between the houses, it's a bad ride downhill. I mean, it's not going to get hooked up to anything. I mean, if at some point, I mean, right now there are potholes or there are rough spots in the road, and if we're going to go forward with, let's see what this looks like, I think one level of seeing what this looks like is resurface the road. And that basically would be it. I mean, that standing alone, and then whatever else you deem, but, I mean, I think there should be a number for, let's just resurface the road, so it's smooth, and it doesn't have cracks, and have that as an option down the road if, if we decide, and if, basically if they want.
Anyone else have anything? Dick?
Yeah. One reason for having improved streets is that they stand up to the punishment that, that streets are going to take. And you say, well, we just have a car, and we just drive in and out a couple times a day, it doesn't really have any heavy loads on it. But I do see our garbage trucks getting bigger and bigger. They're essentially highway-type vehicles now. And you have at least two and probably three of those trucks, maybe four, picking up the glass every week up and down that road. And I don't think that road is going to last for 50 years if we just put another layer of oil mat on top. Now, the road in front of my house, I live a couple blocks up this way, the date on the curb says 1910, and there's some damage to the curbs, but the sidewalks are still usable. And I think most of the road is the original paving. And the road that is really improved, you put down a base, so it's not going to sag under heavy weights, and it's not going to break up over time. Now, I know you don't like change. I hate change. I live in my 1888 house. I wish I could go back to 1888 in some ways. I've still got the pitcher pump on the back porch. I drink the water in the summertime, because it's colder than the tap water. But I really think you people out there ought to think twice before you say you don't want an improved street. And I agree with Floyd that we can, and we have done this before. If you look at Marion Street, we've worked with the trees that are there, we've worked keeping it as close to original as possible. Too bad that Henry left. He could probably commiserate with the change in Marion Street. But again, we can do the study, get the engineer's report, see how much it's going to cost you to fix the street. And in the meantime, we can talk about how we can do it, where it retains the flavor of the street, and it's still a solid enough street that it's going to hold up to the heavy vehicles that are going to travel on it. It's the garbage trucks. Hopefully, you'll never need a fire truck out there, but I can tell you from my experience, it does happen. Twice. Once, my garage burned. Second time, I fell off the roof, and the ambulance came. Of course, the ambulance doesn't weigh as much as a fire truck. But, so I hope that we do vote to include Bloom Lane in the engineer's report.
Jim, you want to talk about that?
Well, I just wanted to clarify for the audience, I think especially, I think the council understands this, what the decision is tonight. The decision tonight is whether or not to go forward with getting data. Councilor Collins has essentially asked staff to consider some alternative designs, not just a regular residential street, but look at some alternatives for a rural street. Look at alternatives that don't take out the landscaping. Consider that. So what happens is, if the council votes to go forward with an engineer's report, then the engineer studies what the boundaries would be, what some of the construction alternatives would be, and what they think it would likely cost. They determine an appropriate boundary, what areas ought to be included, who ought to be assessed, and they come up with some alternatives for the council on how we would apportion the cost, and how they would propose it. And then what happens is, a public hearing is scheduled, and all of the people who are scheduled to be included are given mail notice of the hearing, and they have a right to come to the city council and talk to the city council about the question of whether or not the improvement should be made, and whether this is the appropriate methodology, and whether or not the boundaries are right. So that's the time you really get into the decision of whether or not to make the improvements. And then if the improvements are made, then another public hearing is held before anybody has a bill or an assessment. And that second public hearing is to determine whether the apportionment of the cost is fair for all of the people involved. So what I want to emphasize is that the decision tonight is not a decision to go forward with improvements, it's not a decision to assess anybody, it's a decision to study the feasibility. Now, if a majority of the council is adamant that under no circumstances you want to improve this, then tell us now, so we don't spend any money for something that would be a wasted effort. But absent that, I wanted to make clear for the audience's benefit that all that is being discussed now is whether or not to gather data.
You have any questions, Bessie?
I did. Either Mark or Jim, I'm not sure which. I see on, with, to do with the petition and waivers, that some of them are expiring, like 2016, whatever. Do you know what the ones on Bloom Lane are, when they would expire?
Yes, it's considerably later, like 2025 or something like that.
So there is time. And, you know, again, it's, it's the question, you know, do people know even that it's part of their, when they sign their, in closing papers, you know?
It should show up in a title report.
It does, but the, you know, there's a lot of small print, and the title companies do not tell them.
Do people understand what it says?
And so I'm thinking that, I know the residents don't want it, I only want to say that, and I think it's kind of where Wes was going for, it's kind of like, pay me now or pay me later type thing. If we, if you wait and don't have it improved, which is, you know, okay with me, later on, when the city decides to, or another council decides to, it's going to cost a lot more. And so I, you know, if it were on my street, I'd probably say, no, I don't want it either, because, you know, we've all got enough to pay for as it is. And, but I just wanted to bring that, that point out.
Jim?
I'm echoing what Bessie's saying. My understanding was, when this was brought to us, the only reason that Bloom Lane was even included was because of the potential for savings at this point in time, over the fact that the remonstrances were 2026, 2027, 2025. So technically, can we even override those that are already signed off on? Can we even do it prior to 2025?
Yeah, that's when it expires.
They expire, they go away.
They have to go away.
So we can force the issue if we get to.
And the other thing that I wanted to point out is that, in talking about timing, Councilor Kaczynski's right, this was, in the inclusion of Bloom Lane was motivated solely to see if there can be an economy of scale that will get a lower price. The other thing that we're faced with, is a possibility, is if there is undeveloped land further down on Bloom Lane, which I understand there may be, and the owner of that property later on comes in for a subdivision, he would, he or she would likely ask the council to make the improvements, so that those homes would qualify for conventional financing. And if that happened, the, there would be a push to just do Bloom Lane with the new addition, and there may not be the same economy of scale. I can't say, my crystal ball's not that clear. But the other way that this comes up is if somebody, another property owner, advances the notion of making the improvement, it may or may not be cheaper than, I can't say.
Yeah, a couple of things. One, it's my understanding that Bloom Lane was originally a gravel road, and the city at some point made an agreement with Benton County to trade off some paving for Benton County turning the streets over to us. And at that point, Bloom Lane got that oil mat, and I think also Lochner Road got that oil mat, a section of it. And now that section of Lochner Road's breaking up, and the city, I think, is in kind of a quandary as to what to do about the darn thing, because hard to patch a pothole in an oil mat.
Well, Lochner Road and Ellingson Road, that transfer was part of the deal when the Pepsi Project was coming through. Lynn County gave Albany $1 million, and in return, we took over jurisdiction of Ellingson and Lochner.
I thought part of Lochner was that Benton County trade-off.
No, it, being in Lynn County. So in Benton County, Benton County-
I'll ask that question, too.
Did do some oil mat work for us, because they are set up to do that in, as an in-kind service. I don't remember the specific details of the trade that was done. It wasn't, I don't believe it was just for us to take over the roads, because those, again, I think, transferred at the time that North Albany was annexed into the city.
And I, it's also my understanding that if conditions get grim enough, let's say, that people want to improve down the road, and Bloom Lane is breaking up to the point where it's not satisfactory, that the city could go ahead and say, okay, remonstrances are not, we're just going to go ahead and do it, and have you people pay for it. I don't think this council is mean enough to do that. I don't think the city managers mean enough to do it. But time passes, councils change, city managers change.
Frequently.
I think now is a good time to do it.
I'm sorry. There is a chance that if, if it's not done now, and additional properties partitioned, that you'll have more people who will have petition waivers against their property, and may not know it or understand the ramifications. So where you have, you know, 15, 18 properties now, you may have, you know, 25 properties that you're dealing with at the time that a future council or this council decides to make the improvements.
One more observation when I was out there. I think I counted three fire hydrants along Bloom Lane, and as I look at the aerial map, if, if an engine had to go to the last hydrant to the east on Bloom, just before you get to the power line, I'm not sure where they'd turn around and how they'd get out of there. And that's one of the elements we would always consider in a road improvement. And from the maps I've seen, the right-of-way for Bloom Lane ends right at the lot where the dip occurs, underneath the power line. So there's a long driveway that extends off the end of the right-of-way of Bloom Lane.
That's not street right, or city right-of-way?
I don't think it is, where, under the power lines, no. So that's where, that's where they'd have to look at some form of turnaround for fire. But when I was out there, I pulled in, and there was a contractor working at 2795 on the corner, and a person was trying to come out with a small white car. And I had to actually pull into a person's driveway at 2140 in order to pass. So two, two vehicles passing on the existing oil mat is extremely difficult. As, as we saw when we were looking in South Albany, in Brookfield, the question is, how, how do you have an emergency vehicle in there and still get the people out if the emergency vehicle's blocking the road fighting a fire? So I think those are all pieces that need to be evaluated, and it's an element of public safety. But again, I think that that should be looked at in light of the existing right-of-way and the current topography and the trees and the landscape out there. And I think that Jim posed the right question, that we're looking at is, is there an economy of scale? And if so, what's the scope that we're going to look at? And if that's deferred to some other time, what will happen? And, you know, I think I have a sense of the council that we would be amenable to looking at an urban standard, or less than urban standard. There's no guarantee that the future council would do that. And there are other streets in North Albany that I think have some of the same unique characteristics. So I think we need to look at this as, how is a portion of that going to get developed? Because the standard urban cookie cutter approach doesn't fit in all of North Albany, nor should it, in my opinion. And that was part of the public agreement, I think, when the annexation occurred with North Albany, that there are some unique characteristics that we need to look at. And that's how North Albany got the 10,000 square foot lots, as opposed to the standard 6,500. And that's where we first did our natural feature offsets, density transfers, to take, take advantage of some of those features that already exist out there. So I think Bloom is a representation of some of those natural features that we need to know how we're addressing for all of North Albany.
Okay, all right. Stuart, did you want to, I think, a couple council members, you know, this is kind of a new process for them, for LIDs, talk about the financial mechanism that we have for LIDs?
The process that Jim referred to, a public process that allows participation in two separate public hearings, results in review of the methodology and assessments to property owners. The property owners then have an option to form methods of payment, and typically, it's either a lump sum upfront for the amount that's owed, or payments over a 10-year period. And those payments could vary. It could be structured, however, but under, there are actually provisions in state law, too, that allow that to extend beyond 10 years. Traditionally, in City of Albany, it's been a 10-year payback.
And those could be monthly payments?
That could be, that could vary as well. Could be monthly, could be semi-annual, annual payments.
I think we did do 20 years though, one time. Was that Marion? Or one of them? It seemed like we did a 20-year, but.
Do I recall state law having a provision for seniors, that they can defer that until the property sells?
I'm not familiar with that, so I didn't refer to Jim, and he's nodding.
I think there is a provision for seniors that allows for no payment until the property changes title.
Yeah, thank you, Stuart. Okay, any other questions? Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, Gordon. And from there, then, if there's any residents that wanted to kind of speak about this LID, I think Brian, you wanted to come forward? So what you'll need is to state your name, spell your last name, and furnish your address.
Thank you. My name is Brian Frazzini, it's F-R-A-Z-Z-I-N-I, and I am at 1904 Bloom Lane. I was scratching a bunch of notes, and I apologize, so a little scattered, just trying to gather all the information. First of all, thank you guys for letting me come up here, and for the email responses that I've got. I really appreciate those. I apologize if there's been a few to some of you. I shared a lot of information with the neighbors, and I think a lot of them had some strong opinions, so I appreciate your guys' time on that. Real quick, I understand the process. I had a real good conversation with Ron Irish, and he did a great job explaining everything to me, and I was, I was really happy to talk to him, and the petition and waivers, and kind of how all this works. And I understand you're very early in this. I know there's no votes today, and my concern is, is that if you're going to do engineering studies and spend money on those, I wanted it to be clear to the council how the property owners on Bloom Lane felt before you spent a dime on the street. So when I got this information, my wife and I went, did the information, got the information, kind of talked to Ron Irish, put together a letter to the neighbors, and spent three days going door-to-door handing those out. On the back of those letters were all your emails, so that may be where some of those emails came from. Just letting people know what I learned. And I was overwhelmed with the response from the neighbors. Some, some things I can't repeat in the council, and other things I can, but it was very, very clear to all 15 property owners, and this includes the two property owners on the corner of Crocker and Bloom, because they obviously have some property front there. It was very clear that no one wants this, and not, the money is an issue. But what surprised me is, is how many people told me that the reason they'd moved to our street is because it had that rural feel. We enjoy passing each other, going down the road, and rolling down our windows and talking. We haven't had issues with it. It's, it's the character of the neighborhood. People are concerned about losing, obviously, 40 and 50-year-old trees that are well within the easement to build the road. So there was quite a bit of sentiment about the character of the neighborhood. I wanted, I don't have maps with all the official information, but I can tell you from living on the street, on Bloom Lane since 2007, the road is not cracking, and there are no potholes. The oil seal that is on there is in pretty darn good shape, and I have no complaints. When it rains hard, there are places that puddle like everywhere else, but there are no significant cracks. It's held up really well. That was put down in 2005, I believe, and it looks like it'll hold up for quite a bit longer. It's true that garbage trucks drive up and down it, but it is a dead-end road. There's been an emergency service vehicle down to the very end of the road a few times for the lady at the end of the road, and it didn't have any issues. I think, I realize that you guys have a tough decision. I don't envy the spot that you're in. For me, it comes down to, if I lived on Gibson Hill, and I didn't want to pay for my road to be improved, but the city council said, well, it benefits the rest of the citizens of Albany for your road to be improved. There's a fire station, the fire trucks need to get in and out, it's going to help everyone else, then I get that. going to help everyone else, then I get that. And I'd probably not be here. But, my road doesn't benefit anyone but the fifteen people that sign that piece of paper that you have. It, it doesn't go through anywhere. And we're the ones that get to pass each other and, and deal with that every day. And it's working just fine. And it's, it was, it's very hard to justify, in my mind, forcing those fifteen or, you know, there may be some other lots on a few other lots. It's hard to justify making those people pay thousands of dollars for something that we don't want, destroying the landscape, whatever it may be. If it's a smaller road, maybe not getting into the landscape issue. But, still, you're charging folks thousands of dollars to improve a road that nobody wants. And that's something that's pretty, that was overwhelmingly frustrating for folks. A couple of other quick things that I heard. People were talking about additional subdivisions on Bloom Lane. If you haven't had the opportunity to drive out there, please do. There are fifteen houses, the signatures that you see on your paper there. In addition to that, there are two flag lots about halfway down the road that have not been developed. And then across the street, Katy Corner from my house, that field was just purchased, and I think it was approved for three houses. And that's it. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are no ten or twelve, fifteen-house subdivisions going in on Bloom Lane. There's a very large power company easement under power lines there that you can see on your map in those fields. So, when you talk about future development on Bloom Lane, I can appreciate that there, there will be more houses built. But, we're talking about three or five houses, and then Bloom Lane is done. It's a dead end. There won't be any more houses built. So, I don't anticipate the future need or the use of the road getting substantially greater over the course of years. The last thing I wanted to bring up is the, the money issue finally. I, I understand what Mr. Olson's saying, that somebody's got to pay sometime. And I bought my house after this petition and waiver was on my deed. And it was one of the forty-two pieces of papers that I signed that I, I just didn't recognize. I've just learned about it in the last few weeks. And that's the case with several of these people with petition and waivers. For families like mine, we've just got to the point where we've been able to put a couple hundred dollars a month away into like a college savings growth plan for my two grade schoolers. And if I'm assessed, over the course of ten or fifteen years, even a hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty dollars a month, I'm forced to make a choice. And do I run to Mexico and not pay? Or do I shuffle my budget around and take some of those expenditures, like college savings, out of my budget to pay for a road, even an improvement of the road, if it's, if it's not widened, but even a digging it out and reservicing it? Do I, I mean, I'm having to pay for that road and maybe not save for kids' college? Or, those are the kind of, there's a lot of families on this, on the street. And that's, that's the decisions that I'm going to have to make with my family and that other families are going to have to make. So, it, it's character, it's the feel of the neighborhood, financial. I don't envy the position you're in. I understand that at some point, something may need to be done there. But, I'm telling you, as a resident there, that it's working right now. The road is in fine shape right now. And just wanted to reiterate on that piece of paper that nobody's interested in having anything done. And I apologize for all of your emails if you got too many. Thank you.
Yep, okay, questions?
I was just wondering, how is the storm drainage in the neighborhood? I mean, do you have any problem with water when it rains, other than, that's Oregon, so you do, but...
Yeah, I mean, there's a large, on the north side of the street, there's a very large storm drain system set up that gets pretty darn full when it rains really, really hard. The, when it rains, when we have that one or two inches of rain here a few months ago, it, it runs down the drive, it runs down my driveway. And I know that for a time, my drain won't keep up. And it takes it a few minutes after the rain comes down. But, I don't know that that's any different than anyone with a negative slope driveway. I don't know who invented those, but I really wish they wouldn't put one in my house. So, I don't have any particular issues, any heavy issues with drainage. And I don't know of any in the neighborhood, but I'm just speaking for myself when it comes to drainage. I didn't hear any complaints about it when I went door-to-door.
Thanks.
You know, it's, when you mentioned about your title report that had the forty-two pages and didn't notice that waiver of remonstrance, that's very common. Don't feel bad. But, we have wrestled with this for, you know, eighteen years I've been, you know, on the daisies whenever it comes to an LID. And, and hearing the frustration from homeowners not knowing that they had that clause in their title report. So, you can imagine what we went through back in, gosh, I don't know, those late nineties or so, the six-hundred lot subdivision out Fifty-third Avenue area, that all those property owners didn't know that they had those waiver remonstrances when we went to do the improvements for Fifty-third. Boy, was that a real heated conversations taking place. So, you know-
I'm not frustrated at all with it because it's my own fault. I mean, I am, I am a by, I'm a black and white guy, and I read stuff that I sign. And after about five or six pages, you know, with a title person and a real estate person, you just kind of-
Well, in the homeowner's defense, a lot of the, you know, title companies, they just don't even pick up on that of what, you know, what that particular language is. And so, many homeowners are not informed, which is, you know, really sad. But, but the council over the years is really, has stated many times, we don't want to see any more waivers of remonstrances. We just don't want to have to go through that again. And it's just, you know, it is very, it's very difficult when it, when all of a sudden they do pop up. But, but yeah, you don't feel bad if you didn't notice that because many other homeowners don't see that, that certain language that's in that document. Okay, any other questions, Abrian? Okay, all right. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak then on that? Yeah, Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. My name is Bill Root, R-O-O-T. I live at 2634 Northwest Valley View. There's been a lot of discussion about Bloom. I'm not going to talk about Bloom. One of the things that's happening with this piece of property on Valley View, that particular piece of property is owned by a developer that wants to donate that property to Benton County. He wants to allow that property to be tied into the existing Benton County Park, in North Albany Park. In doing that, he would like to put trails through there. Jeff Powers, who is the head of the Trails Commission for Benton County, has agreed to do that. Put trails through there that would tie Valley View to the park, that would tie Crocker to the park, and tie Valley View to Crocker. A lot of people, we have a lot of people that walk, walk their dogs, bicycle, that would love to be able to wander through a meandering trail through the woods rather than have to be out on the street. My wife walks her dog every day. She absolutely refuses to walk on the sidewalk. A lot of people do not walk on the sidewalks. There aren't any on Valley View, by the way, that are on Crocker. Because if, if the dog has to go to the bathroom, she wants it done in a place where she can stop and pick it up, and it doesn't violate somebody else's property. And that happens a lot. The, between Grace and Valley View, there's existing sidewalks that nobody uses. And those were put in due to the St. James subdivision. The, the whole thing with this piece of property on Valley View is, if it gets donated to Benton County, there would be one person that would be involved with that LID. That would be Benton County. They, they have stated to me that they really are skeptical about what's going to happen with that piece of property. If it comes back that there's going to be developed to an urban standard, they could likely refuse to get that piece of property donated to them. At that point, the developer would have no choice but to go ahead and develop in there. We don't want it developed. The people that live on Valley View are adamant that two things are happening. One of them is, you've heard of Valley View a number of times in the past, is the speeding. That's not that everybody that speeds on Valley View, but we have a few that do. If you developed Valley View to an urban standard, you would encourage speeders rather than deter them. Because you would have a wider, less occupied sidewalks, et cetera. It would encourage speeders rather than discourage them, which is what we would like you to do. One other thing, Valley View is totally occupied. There is no way that you're going to put any more houses on Valley View. It's not that you're not going to have other traffic on Valley View, but there is no other area. All of it is occupied, clear from Crocker, clear to scenic. So, there's not going to be any development that's on Valley View. That piece of property, if you were to require that to go to the urban standard, would be the only piece of property on the entire street, which is about a mile long, that would be at urban standard. That just doesn't fit with the character of Valley View. That part of property that's on Crocker is across the street from Grace. And like I said, it has not, people don't walk in sidewalks. They walk in the street. I've seen it. My neighbors have all seen it. They, they don't use a sidewalk. That sidewalk is hardly ever used. And it would not be of, a benefit to the people that live around there to require sidewalks on that one piece of property. Like I said, Benton County is willing to put a trail off in the street, through the woods, clear from the end of that property, clear to Crocker, or Valley View. And clear from Crocker all the way over to the park. They're committed to that. The developer is committed to donating it to Benton County. It, I don't see any legitimate reason why the city should say, okay, now that we have Benton County owns it, let's get them. I don't think, I don't think Benton County wants it. I know that they don't want it. That's part of their process right now, is they're saying, we are very worried about what the city is going to do as far as that piece of property, as far as whether or not they'll even accept the donation. There's quite a few people in the audience. I talked to a lot of people that live on Valley View or adjacent to it. Nobody wants improved Valley View. Valley View is just the way they want it right now. They don't care about an LAD. The LAD would only affect Benton County. It would not affect anybody else on Valley View. And, but, you don't need it. Just leave it rural. Leave it, like you said, it ain't broke, don't fix it. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Good information before there's any sort of design if it, if the project goes forward, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may. So, the, what staff is proposing is that Valley View be a rural section rather than an urban section, in the, evaluated as that in the engineer's report. And then Crocker as an urban section. And, and I don't know exactly the disposition of Benton County Park's department. I know they do have to make a business decision. You know, there's been several iterations to what's going to happen, or might happen, with that property that abuts Valley View. Initially, the developer offered to sell it to Benton County. And after discussions about potential road improvements and costs that the county might incur from those, the developer has said he's willing to donate it to Benton County. And then Benton County will need to, to determine if the cost of the LID that they may incur is, you know, does that outweigh the benefit of getting that property and, and adding that to the existing park? So, I think the engineer's report would help answer those questions for the county. They can't really make a determination whether a donation of that property then pencils out for them until they know what costs they face. And then just one other clarification on the improvement of, of Valley View. Again, a boundary has not been determined. That's part of the engineer's report. But, there is a chance that properties on the north side of Valley View, along the frontage improvements, rural frontage improvements, could be included in the LID, even though they are currently developed. Again, that's a question to be answered through the engineer's report and discussion in the public hearing of that engineer's report.
Right, Rich?
Not to beat a dead horse further to dead. Is there anything on Crocker or Valley View that is failing?
Well, Crocker is not in, oh, as far as utilities?
Utilities. Any, any reason we need to dig it up?
Uh, I'm not aware of anything. The sewer is in, is fairly new, water line, at least from Valley View. Well, actually, we've done some work on the water. I don't know exactly what the extent is. But, there's nothing in our C, five-year CIP that I can remember of water or sewer work.
So, geysers or, you know?
Not at this moment. That doesn't mean it won't happen tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there, oh, Dick?
Yeah. Every, every street fails eventually, whether it's an improved street, or an oil mat, or whatever. Have you given any thought as to how the cost of repairing these unimproved streets will be borne at the time that they fail and somehow have to be fixed? Maybe, maybe turned back to being gravel roads again?
Well, currently, Crocker and Valley View are under Benton County's jurisdiction. And so, if there were a street failure there, it would be Benton County's responsibility. I do know that Benton County doesn't have the financial ability to do, they're not doing any overlays throughout the entire county. So, you know, their response is probably going to be just to patch it and try and get it through. And, and the condition likely will continue to deteriorate.
Bill? Where's, where's the money come from?
Well, the money, unless the council wanted to make improvements or fix a county road with city money, the money would have to come from Benton County for Crocker and Valley View.
I was thinking more specifically about a unimproved city street that never has been.
An unimproved city street? If the city were to, to maintain an unimproved city street, it would just come out of our street maintenance fund, our general street maintenance fund, which would, you know, impact how many potholes we might be able to patch, or another capital improvement project we might want to do as far as restoring an improved street.
Doesn't that violate a present city policy, that we take care of streets that have been improved?
That is the, the general priority. We do go in and try, when we had gravel streets, we'd grade those, I think, once a year. But, you're right. We, we don't spend any funds that we can get away with on unimproved streets.
Thank you.
Well, once again, this resolution is just for an engineer's report. I think we've had a lot of good discussion. We need to get the report and continue that, this debate. So, with that, I'll make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Just before that, Bill, I never finished asking if other people wanted to comment on the, on Bloom.
Okay, but we can still have a motion to adopt the resolution.
Yeah, was there anyone else that wanted to speak on, okay, yeah, Fran?
Good evening. My name is Fran Beck, and it's B-E-C-K. I live at 3230 Northwest Kingstonway. And I just wanted to say, I'm not sure how familiar all of you are with our neighborhood. And I just wanted to say that we are basically at the edge of town. To the north is, right now, it's forest. It's probably a plantation of, of trees. And to the east is a very steep slope. It is straight down, just like we were talking about earlier. And, so, even though the city will grow, it's very probable it's not going to grow north and east of where we are. And, and my street, Kingstonway, is a dead end. It's a, probably, I don't know how long it is, maybe a quarter of a mile. It's not very long. But, it has been, the end of the street has been, it's, it's obvious to me that there's a potential that it could go through. And it could go north. And, and that would mean that the city somehow annexed in a forest to become more city streets. The other end of Kingstonway is, is, we're basically at the top of the hill. We, we have an escarpment. It's, it's pretty decent escarpment there. So, the other side of Valley View, from that big potential extension of the park, the corner of Crocker and Valley View, that cannot be made into a sidewalk. It's, it's, it's a dirt wall. And so, the folks that live on- wall. And so, the folks that live on Crest Loop, I don't see any reason why there would be a sidewalk on the backside of their properties.
Fran, I don't think any part of those streets are going to be a part of the LID.
Oh, okay.
So, it's only looking at Valley View and Crocker and Bloom. So, there wouldn't be any improvements at this time for those streets.
The reason why I mentioned that was because I think you were saying that there was the potential, the other side of Valley View.
Well, I'm sorry. I may have been confusing. The properties that front Valley View Drive could be included in the LID to pay for improvements on Valley... Those improvements across their frontage.
Right. Okay, very good, very good.
Sorry about the confusion.
Mark, there's only one house that faces Valley View, that's on Valley View, across from that wooded area.
Yeah.
I think their backyards, it looks like.
Yeah, the rest of them face either Kingston or Crocker.
So, you'll be... Yeah, you won't be included in that LID.
Right, right. Yeah, thank you very much for clarifying that. Yeah, I would just continue, just because I would want to say that as a homeowner and a dog owner in that corner of the city, I know a lot of my neighbors really value the park, and the park is getting kind of encroached on by, I'm not sure exactly the family name of the folks that had the property to the west of it. They're developing it right now. And then, of course, the developer that we're talking about tonight, that owns the Valley View Crocker Corner there, they're developing constantly, working on building homes there. And so, I just want to share that I would be really, really happy if we could expand North Albany Park because of the fact that so many of my neighbors use the park. Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah. And we are looking at North Albany Park of having a dog kind of off-leash area too. So, that's kind of in the works, but... Okay, thank you, Fran. Anyone else that wanted to comment or speak about this issue? Yep, Jim?
Jim Claussen, 1-403-15th Albany. Now, Hasso has a blog, and then today I read a thing on his blog about the Albany budget and how it didn't foster in any costs for repairing a road that needs repaired in the southern part of Albany, and that it didn't look like that that was going to be done in the near future. I find it interesting that a road that needs repair isn't getting it while we're talking about forcing people that don't want anything done to their roads to get it done. This... Just to make it more aesthetically like the rest of Albany, to make it more urban. This collective, this collectivist thinking about making everybody the same is getting out of hand. These people don't want it. They moved out there because that's what they like. That's what they wanted. That's what they want to continue. I don't have a dog in this fight. I don't live in... I don't live up there. I don't live over by the road that needs repair. I don't have a dog in this fight. But it really is conflicting to see the evidence between those two things. You've got a road that needs fixing, and people want it fixed, versus an area that they don't want fixed, but you want to go in there and engineer it just to meet your standards. Seems kind of weird to me.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Jim. All right, anyone else that would like to comment? Okay, all right. Thank you, folks. Okay, so, Bill, you wanted to do a motion?
Well, I think the clerk can read the motion I made. It just needs to be seconded.
The motion was to adopt the resolution.
The engineer's report. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion, council? Okay. All right, Rich?
Actually, my two favorite words when it comes to streets is Commercial Way. I happen to live there, and Bloom Lane is in better shape than Commercial Way is, as far as the surface of it. That's my two cents, and I guess if you don't want to keep hearing that 18,000 times, we should fix Commercial Way.
Okay, any other comments?
If that LID started right away.
Yeah. That's one out of 18,000.
Okay, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, okay. That'd be fine, yeah. Okay, next, we're going to skip over to, and we'll come back to item two, and we'll take up item three. And this is directing the use of litigation settlement proceeds for development of a request for proposals to prepare a conceptual design for police station. This is on page 19, council, and I think there's also, this beginning on page 19, there's a resolution on page 24, but there's also a replacement page on the dais. So, Chief, did you want to come forward to talk about anything, or did Frank Morse and Sheriff Bright want to speak, come forward and speak on anything? Senator and retired sheriff.
You're wrong. I thought you'd make Frank do it, Dave, because he wasn't here last night.
I wasn't going to say anything about that.
You're welcome.
For that, is my punishment to go first?
Yeah, go ahead.
For the record, Frank Morse, M-O-R-S-E, live at 3616 Northwest Eagleview Drive in Albany. Madam Mayor and councilors and staff, it's a pleasure to be here. And, Bessie, I just flat forgot last week, or whenever it was, so...
I can understand that, Frank.
I'm delighted to be able to be here today and address whatever questions you may have. If you'd like, Madam Mayor, to... For us to make some comments, some background...
Whatever you're comfortable with, or if the council has questions, whichever.
I think for the benefit of audience on air, two to 20, whoever it is, just like as a small background would be helpful, Frank. Okay?
Yeah.
We tackle it, and then you...
Sure, I'll fill in.
...that cleanup?
Okay.
Well, I'd like to just comment what appreciation I have for your staff and the opportunity to work on this project. And I'd have to say honestly, Floyd, when we talked about this, I had no appreciation for the depth and the time and the effort that it would take to work on this, on these two facilities. But it's been rewarding, and it's been rewarding because of the support of the staff and the committee that we have. Very, very dedicated folks. And so, we've jumped in. We've tried not to leave stones unturned. We've gone into depth on issues. And, of course, as you know, the direction that we are proposing is different than the original planning in putting the facility out on Pacific Boulevard. And the question that was posed to the chief and his staff was, all things being equal, where would you prefer to reside? And the response was, where we are, if we can expand. So, then, we took that and said, "Let's explore it further and look at what actually would..." Do a cost analysis based on the best that the staff could do on market value for the properties. And there are three parcels that we divided it up into. And all three of them, as you know, would provide just marginally greater space, acreage, than the Pacific Boulevard site. And but in the cost analysis, if you develop the entire, all three parcels, there was about a million dollar premium of excess cost to reside in the present location. And kind of the general consensus of the committee was that, that over the span of time, if there's a way to make that happen, that that really is the preferred location. Now, there's some mitigation that can occur if... And that's why we're recommending that this request for a proposal first go through a needs assessment and a program review to see if, for a 20-year time horizon, you'd have the ability to expand if you could secure all three parcels into the future. But for a 20-year horizon, would 3.19 acres be sufficient? And develop that, and leave undeveloped the third parcel, which would save, you know, and these are very rough figures, approximately 600,000 of that four... of that million-dollar figure by not doing the demolition. Leave those houses on the tax roll, and but secure them and have them available for expansion when it's required in the future. Now, last night, we had a very interesting meeting. We had asked for the staff to bring back the request for proposals so the committee could look at those and see if they're consistent with the direction and recommendations that we're making to you folks. And we were working on the fire RFP. We did get to the police RFP. We didn't spend a lot of time on it. But out of that discussion came an idea that was a little different than what was originally considered. Rather than going through the screening process and then selecting an architect or a design firm, and then having that firm fulfill the requirements of the RFP, the thought was that we would open it up, do the screening, and out of that, select three firms, and all three firms would be required to perform the tasks that are identified in the RFP. But we would pay for those, for that service, for those three firms. And the figure that was thrown out and discussed was $40,000. So, to do the RFP, you'd be looking at a fixed cost of $120,000. And that would be compared to the cost of selecting one firm, which, of course, is unknown. And so, the committee picked up on that and felt that it was a creative way to actually maybe come up with better ideas and less cost. And so, that's a direction that we're pursuing with the staff, and we'll be coming back with something that's more fleshed out. It's a work in progress, and I suspect that our next meeting, which is scheduled June 10th, that we will be looking at the detail of the language and revisiting the wisdom of that concept. But it's a little bit different, and one that kind of caught the attention of the committee. So, Dave?
Just a couple of comments to go along with that. When I was here last time, that was the easy one. And we kind of assumed that that would be the easiest of the decisions that would come from the committee. There's been talk about crystal balls here tonight, and I just want to point out that no one in the committee obviously has a crystal ball. But when we talked about some of the things that might have led to the defeat of the proposal in November, one of the things that so many of us heard over and over again was, you know, "Why are we moving, you know, to this other site? Why can't the police department stay where they're at on that site?" And so, that's one of the reasons, along with, you know, the chief was asked, you know, everything else being equal, would you like... You know, where would you prefer to be? I understand that idea as well. There is a benefit to having the police department immediately adjacent to the jail and the sheriff's office. The question is, you know, can we make it work, as Senator Morse has said? And so, we delved deeper into it to find out. And quite honestly, the concept of staying there at the present site has a lot of unknowns right now. But in the proposal, the recommendation that you have before you, the committee believes it's important that you go ahead and at least make an effort to negotiate with those property owners on those three parcels and see if we can reach a... an agreement all the way around that is fair for everyone and still stays within what we think is a reasonable budget. Now, if that can't happen, then we are very glad that you have the Pacific site, because that gives an excellent fallback position to the council. And if we... If you stay on the present site, our proposal is that the Pacific site be resold, and that helps offset some of those costs. Of course, it also means that we need to get on the negotiations with property owners rapidly, because you need to know what the site is before you can do much in the way of design development. And so, that is part of that recommendation, that we think that you need to go forth quickly. If it works, great. If it doesn't work, fallback position to Pacific. Another thing that's in the recommendation that we think is important, too, is that regardless of the negotiations that may be going on at the present site, we would recommend that you go ahead and apply to ODOT for access on the Pacific Boulevard from the Pacific site. Just in case you need to fall back to Pacific, have that already ongoing, have that discussion going. And even if you have to... We end up selling it later on. If we stay at the present site, it's an advantage to you. You've already got that part worked out with ODOT. So, you'll find that in the recommendation. I want to point out, too, that, you know, there has been... There was discussion among the public, you know, "Well, if you need more land at the present site, why not go to all that vacant land that's behind the jail?" And just for the record, staff has made overtures to the railroad. They are not interested in selling, and so, that's off the table. So, it's... But due diligence was made, and we know what the answer was. And I want to give credit also to the concept that we're looking at in the RFPs with the competition between three firms to Bill Riles. Bill is one of our members and brought this to us last night. I mean, I had never heard of this before. I was... When we started talking, quite honestly, sir Bill, I was going, "Really?" You know?
Skeptical.
And the more we talked and discussed this, and Bill explained this, how this would work, the more intrigued they became with the idea. And as the senator said, it's still a little work in progress here. Staff are working on the RFPs to see what they might look like. But I think the possible benefits to this are well worth it. We would have the opportunity to have three firms give us their best ideas, take us through that phase one of the RFP, and the city would then be able to take a look at that, which would include their cost estimates. There would be work product that you would own, and then you would be able to negotiate a price with whoever your first choice is, with being able to tell them, you know, "We like your product, you know, good ideas, but you like this one too, so let's talk a fair price." And if they can't do that, we can go to the number two, but you own the work product, so you can take the best of all three if you want to when it's all done. Anyway, it's rather complicated. It's not traditional, but I think it holds a lot of good possibilities. And if this works out the way we think it will at the moment, the potential cost savings to the taxpayer could be significant, because this forces the firms to really look at this and give us their best shot on costs and how they can keep the costs down. So, have I totally butchered the concept, Bill?
Okay, questions, yeah, Floyd?
In reviewing the recommendation...
In reviewing the recommendation, it says, you know, go negotiate with the property owners and see what you can do to tie up that option. At what point, what's the trigger that upsets the apple cart? The cost estimates are based upon the information from Lynn County tax records. We may have all willing sellers, or we may not. And did you discuss the potential of worst-case scenario, eminent domain? And if the property exceeded the, for all three options, $2.1 million, you know, what's the threshold where you say this is no longer equal?
Well, there is, there has been some discussion with respect to that, and one comment, and the committee kind of left it there, was, well, we'll just throw that back to the council and let them make that determination. My preference would be is that as this information develops, and we understand what, what all the costs are, that if it's, if it's close or, you know, looks reasonable, that the committee have a chance to come back and evaluate that in light of all the work that we've done. We've put a lot of effort into this. And it becomes, if you can tie up the property, then you have the opportunity to look at the true costs that will come out of the RFPs. And ultimately, you know, the options to hold the property shouldn't be excessive, but ultimately, if it, if it just, things just fell apart, we've always got a backup with Pacific.
And the question of eminent domain?
Well, we're not going to go there. I mean, I don't think the committee would ever recommend that.
I think with the final, I asked the committee that, and they said that they wouldn't take it off the table, that they would leave it with the council. Part of the negotiating process.
So, this, this recommendation is slightly different than AFD where you've used the program report to define the functions in the building, and what you're asking for here is to revisit the question of the programs and what size.
Oh, thank you. That is a difference between the fire department and the PD. There are some, some differences in the, the programming document is the document that talks about all the spaces and, and sizes and what's going on in the building. And there have been some changes and so forth that impacted that, we thought particularly with the police department. And the chief and Jeff Heinrichs have been really great about working with us on it. You know, we've got a chief that wasn't here when that was originally developed, so he didn't have a chance to talk about that. The percentage of population increase in the city that was used to formulate that, which then translated into a number of employees to anticipate in the coming years, we think that's lower than was anticipated. We recognize there are some spaces that in, that probably don't need to be there. So, the bottom line is this, we said, you know, that's one that needs to be updated. And I'm, I understand that their staff are already working on that and probably going back to the firm that did it for what I heard extraordinarily reasonable fee and just updating it. So, that would be done prior to the RFPs going out. It wouldn't be part of the RFP.
And I guess responding to Frank's original comment, I just appreciate the work that the two chairs have done and the committee has done because I wasn't sure how much work was going to take, but I knew it wasn't going to be easy. But I, but I also had confidence.
You're being smile now, too, yeah.
But I also had confidence in the efforts of the two chairs that, you know, pulling together the variety of people that you have on the committee for input will bring a lot of good ideas to the table, and the one that surfaced last night, I'm not sure would have ever surfaced had we not had that process. So, I appreciate all your hard work, and the long-term objective is to make sure we have proper public safety facilities in this community.
And we're very committed to that issue. One thing that we would share with you is that as these RFPs take shape and are implemented, the committee wants to stay engaged in that public process. When the designs and the concepts are put out to the community, we want to participate as advocates for this process, for the public input. And then, when the RFP is completed, we will reconvene in, well, the due date is, is November 1, if that doesn't change. We will convene again and finally look at all of the data that's been presented and then wrap that up with a final recommendation to you. The committee is very dedicated to stay with this project to its completion. Now, the one thing we haven't talked about is the funding equation and where the source of funds will be in our recommendation to you. We're going to tackle that on June 10th, and we, if we have to, we'll call another meeting. We're thinking we should recess for the summer, but the final, obviously, the final recommendation that we will bring to you on funding will come after the costs have been estimated through the RFP process.
Yeah, Rich?
A couple of questions. In your deliberations for the cost pros and cons, was any thought given to the cost savings of not having to drive back and forth to the jail? I mean, was that, was that a number that was come up with or just the fact that, yeah, you're going to have that?
No, it, what, we have not put a dollar figure to it because I don't know that you The point was made that it's very different having the jail separate from the courts because we move every prisoner back and forth to the courts. It's a huge issue, and in, if we could have built a jail across the street at the time and not have to go up multiple stories and not been landlocked, that's where the jail should have been. There's a similar connection with the PD, but nowhere as large because most of the arrests come in off the street. You know, if, if they're talking to a suspect and they're interviewing them at the PD, yes, then they just can walk across the alley, and that's where the advantage is. But most of the arrests don't come that way.
Second thing, as you, as you go back and, and talk about acquisition of properties, the possibilities thereof, I have had some informal conversations with, with other counselors, and in my mind, and at least some of theirs, there is a difference between taking somebody's house where they have raised their kids and taking somebody's investment. I mean, if I own some rental houses, I mean, all that is money versus if that was where my children were raised, that's a big deal to me. And I think we, there is the possibility that, when you said you left the thought process open for condemnation, I think it should be left open, and I think it's more open than people think it is. Not to say that if little old lady is, is there with her, with her family pictures that we ought to be, you know, grinning and grunting, but I think if it's an investment, that's a different thought process.
One thing that we also included in our report was the sensitivity to relocation for those tenants and the folks that, that would be displaced. And we don't have any specific recommendation other than that maybe the council could be sensitive to that issue and provide some measure of assistance. And that, of course, is a function, is two of time. You could negotiate something for, for the, the third parcel that allows the people to live in their homes for, for quite a period of time. So, there's, there's a myriad of things that could be on the table, but I didn't, we did want to make sure that, that that was included, that sensitivity to the relocation issues. That was important to the committee.
Jack?
Yeah, if you're talking about condemnation of property, I'd have to vote no, period. So, particularly homeowner property, I'd have to vote no. Rental property, that's, that's a different idea, but I don't often agree.
That's what I said.
I don't often agree with my colleague Callum down there, but I do on this one. My other question or comment, I guess, is this seems kind of like switching horses in midstream, and I don't ride horses myself, never have ridden a horse, but maybe it's easier to do than I think. But it seems to me there's all kinds of rocks you can slip off or holes you can fall into. Seems like we've very well decided we are going to have a new police station out there on Pacific Avenue and 25th, whatever clock. And I heard rumors about switching to this place, but I don't know that the council has agreed that that's a good idea.
And the question to us, the question hasn't been brought to the council.
I didn't think of that. So, I kind of wonder if it's a little premature to be asking for design money or is, are designs one or the other, whether it's this location or Pacific Avenue?
I would think a building would have to fit a piece of geography that's going to be up there.
The, the concept is, is a sequence in that you explore the possibility of acquiring those properties at a price. That could be the deal killer, the price. Any number of things, you could have an unwilling seller could, could kill it. But to do that in a fairly short period of time so that it's known when the RFP, now, Jim, what was the date that the RFP selection would be made? We've got it in the material here, but...
Well, I don't know because when we talked last night, the programming issue was still on the table, and I know the chief is moving ahead with that now. The letter went out to the property owners involved earlier, probably last week, and I think that Captain Heinrich was expecting we would have a response to determine whether we have willing sellers sometime within the next week or so. And then, we would report that to the committee on the 10th, hopefully, and the committee would decide if those numbers proposals look good or if they look bad or if they want to recommend eminent domain. And then, ultimately, that question will come to the council. But I'm sorry, I, I don't know.
The current schedule for the RFP says that it would, the notice of award would be in mid-August. So, these things are on a parallel track, if you will. The RFP is moving forward, the development and so forth. The property acquisition is moving forward, and they should come together by mid-August. And by, by mid-August, if you don't have those properties tied up and, you know, for, as Frank said, for whatever reason, it's not going to work, then you know you're at Pacific. If it is working, you know you're at...
And that jogs my memory. The first issue in the selection process is to go through a review of qualifications. The qualifications are going to be the same regardless of the site. So, you're going to select, if you go with the committee's recommendation, you will select your top three based on qualification. It's only at that second step where you would then ask them to work on design that you would need to have the decision made on site. So, I think Sheriff Burris is right. We've got time, but the challenge would be if you have to use eminent domain. If you have to get into eminent domain issues, then everything is more uncertain, but I think we are hoping we will have willing sellers. We are hoping we will have a price that makes sense, but we'll report back when we know.
All right. We've done, Nick then Bill.
I'm kind of, this, you're going to do all this real quick, you say. Of course, you come to my portion and say, hey, you want to sell your house? My first reaction would be, hell, no. So, maybe people out there feel different, but anyway, seems like this, this could drag on to be a time-consuming situation. And I'm wondering if your committee has thought at all about splitting the two stations up and putting the fire station up, which we already have. We know where it's going to be. We know about how big it needs to be. I think we've got it very well decided. Has there been any thought of the committee doing that, splitting the two?
No, we...
Taking your time then on the, on the police department to do all this property stuff and...
You mean going to the, the voters separately? Is that what you're talking about?
That's what I'm talking about, yes.
Well, at the moment, I don't know that, we're still in a timeframe where it isn't necessary, I don't think, to do that. You know, you say we have to do things fairly rapidly, and that's correct. And we're saying if it, that's one of the variables that if, if it can't be done fairly rapidly, then, then you may have to switch to the Pacific site. But, you know, the other thing that we're fighting here, it was about the last time I was here, the cost of construction is continuing to rise and, you know, we just can't sit on our thumbs and for very long, so...
So, has anybody on the committee suggested that you split the two projects and do the firing, which you could start up on right now? I would think.
We are starting.
They're talking about two separate, but parallel RFPs.
Yes.
That will then dovetail back together for consideration.
I know all that. I'm saying, does anybody on the committee say, it looks like this police station thing is taking too long. Let's split them up, have the voters have two different chances on two different projects.
I don't believe that the committee would recommend a protracted police station, you know, program and development. We have a, we have a window here of pulling together the property, and if it happens, it happens. You would have then that option of, of considering that site. You'd know what the cost would be. If it doesn't happen within the timeframe, roughly to August, then I think the committee is saying, move to Pacific, focus everything there. It's a great backup.
Yeah, I, you know, it, at this point, you're not going to make November, assuming that we have to go out for a geo-bond and in some fashion, I, I think, well, yeah, perhaps not for everyone, but I think that the odds are that it's a given. You're not going to make November. The next window of opportunity is May, and that may be really tight. But when, when we get the results back, when you get the results back from the RFP, then I think that's when that decision's made. You know, if, if the fire department is ready, do you go and wait on the other one or is there an advantage to keeping together or whatever? But, but you, you aren't forced it to that decision point yet.
Could, could the fire station go in November if it went by itself?
The RFP information won't even come back until around the 1st of November if you can stay on this schedule, and I think that's impossible.
I think, talking about that, right, with timing is, and this has been kind of, my kind of main question is sort of before the, you know, when the process whole started, when will be the time, when's the best timing to go to the voters? So, and how should it be done to the voters? Should it be done as police and fire or, you know, or separately? So, my sentiments are, and if doing campaigns for many years, what would be sellable, and as doing, managing three of our, you know, police and fire levies, is if we separate it, it's pretty much a goner for the police department. So, please, the fire department's pretty much going to be, being the sellable part for the police station. There's too many people in the community, and it's very sad to see it, but they just don't want to really support a police station. Now, as a jail, yeah, but as a police station is more challenging, and it's very sad. But if you look at communities across the nation, that's kind of the sentiment that you'll see. So, if you're going to go to the voters, what's that timing going to be? Because if it is next May, next year pretty much is a very low voter turnout. So, how will you present it to the voters? Also, we need to, and I, maybe the committee needs to kind of look at the timing for when our bond will be retiring. So, when the bond retires, the taxes decrease, property taxes, so then the timing you go back out to the voters, are you going to be looking at an increase in tax? So, that part is what's going to be the sellable piece to a campaign is if it's going to be a tax increase or not a tax increase, too. So, I know you've got a tough situation there to look at, but that's kind of where timing is pretty crucial in this, in this situation, so, but if you can be able to look at that within the committee.
Mayor, we have not had that discussion yet about what the recommendation would be to split... to split or to put them together. I think we can share with you what our preference is, and that is that they should go together because then you have, you have two facilities with one financing mechanism. If you have an overrun on one and an under run on the other, you have more flexibility with the use of those funds. But the other thing is that I think that what we can do is, this committee can be the bridge to the community. And as you drive by Jackson Street and you look at the police facility, all is well until you go inside and look, and every member of the committee has made that tour. And when we wrote on the first, second paragraph, or no, the first paragraph, "The building is woefully inadequate for today's needs," you all know that, "and it's woefully, woefully, doubly, triply inadequate for the future." Something has to be done. And I think this committee and the process we're going through, hopefully, we can be that bridge, and with the RFP process. When these engineering firms, architectural firms are developing these, there's a strong feeling in the committee that we needed to be opening that, all those ideas up to the community and getting that input and the buy-in and engagement. So hopefully, we can get this done. There's no question of any member in the committee with respect to the need. Something has to happen.
Yeah.
There's a lot of misconceptions among the public, too, about the existing building. I'm sure you've heard the same as we have, why don't you remodel, or why don't you add a second or third floor on the existing building? You know, for instance, we have looked at the actual construction drawings and talked with the architect that designed that building. The existing foundation and walls are not designed to go up. You could go, I mean, you could build a building around it and go up, do something else, that's, yes, if you want to put enough money into it. But could the inside be gutted, remodeled, and added on to? Sure could. And I think that's part of our concept for staying at the present site. You reuse the existing building as much as possible and add on in whatever fashion makes sense. And I think that's, I hope that that's, will answer some of the public's questions about that site.
And to me, what I hear a lot is just people that don't value city government as well, don't value public services, and don't value our law enforcement like they should. That's a challenging piece, you know, for us to be able to get out there and really be able to educate people over that value. And, you know, and a lot of that, I kind of blame a lot of the social media that puts out distorted information, but it is a challenging piece, is we need to have people be able to value our law enforcement and realize, you know, put that, you know, put that vote towards supporting our law enforcement, too. And they need to be able to have the tools to be able to provide that safety net for us. But, yeah, I mean, that, part of, some of the voters is what I'm seeing is basically is they don't place that value, and that's going to be a challenging piece. I think Bill was first, then Bessie.
So I'm confused on this RFP, because it sounds like what we're looking for is some responses that we can evaluate to determine the qualifications of these architects or businesses, parties, how you want to identify them. And from that, we would select three, and with the idea of paying them a fee of $40,000 to develop conceptual drawings and plans and so forth. Is that correct? Because that isn't what the resolution says. Now, I'll come back to that in a minute. But it sounds like while that's going on, we're also going to be looking at, seeing if the three different options out at the current station, if we have willing property sellers. If we don't, it defaults to the property over on 99. So the resolution directs the use of litigation settlement proceeds, and I'm not sure, we don't have a value or a number there, but it's some cost to develop the RFP for proposals to prepare conceptual design for the police station. Well, we're not asking for a conceptual design at this point. We're trying to pick out people based on what we think is their qualifications to prepare conceptual designs and so forth. Am I wrong?
Well, sort of. We, this morphed a little bit from where we started out. The original thought was, is that you would authorize the use of funds to go ahead and issue the RFP, and the funds would actually be used to pay for the work that you're asking for in the RFP. I mean, this language still works, but the process has changed a little bit, as described by the co-chairs tonight. It's now, as I understand it, kind of a two-step process, where they would first look at the qualifications of folks that express an interest in the project, and then they would select three to do the sort of conceptual design work. The money that's being authorized is for that work. That's what you would be agreeing to if you approve the resolution tonight.
So if that's the case, I would think it would be prudent to have that in the resolution, authorizing the $120,000 for that process, as well as whatever other costs there are for developing, I don't know, for developing one RFP or two. The first one is for qualifications, and once those are sorted through, and three of them are picked, is it an additional RFP?
No.
Just one, I think. Jim?
Let me take a stab at this, and I apologize, I'm a little come lately. I have only attended one facility committee meeting, the last one, though. I think what's going to, all that you're really being asked tonight is whether or not you'll authorize the use of settlement funds to secure the design rendering, design information, cost estimate for the police station. That's the only question that's before you tonight. We can't put in a dollar amount because we don't know, well, you could put in the $120,000 amount that is recommended, if you are willing to go through that process. If not, you can't put in a dollar amount, because under the ordinary process, you simply select a qualified architect, and then you negotiate with that firm to see what they will charge. Mr. Riles' suggestion, I think, was, in fairness, that the current system given us by state law gives the architect we select no incentive to be particularly cost-effective. I mean, the current system basically says you select an architect, and then you're largely at his mercy about what he wants to charge you. The alternative proposal says, we're going to take a finite amount, $120,000, we're going to split it up three ways, we're going to get, hopefully, we're going to get three proposals that are good quality proposals for that money. So you could put the 120 in if you wish, as long as you are willing to go with this new methodology that says, we're going to do a two-step to get to the same outcome. First, select qualified architects, and then go through the design process.
Right, and bear in mind, you've already approved the use of settlement money to go ahead with the fire department RFP, which was, I mean, I think you were talking about this process being the same for both facilities. I'm assuming that's what the recommendation was.
That's where we're headed.
So this would just be a similar authorization.
And the reality is, the recommendation's going to be $120,000. If that's going to be the recommendation from the committee, that's what they voted on last night. And that would be the dollar amount that would be authorized, basically, with this resolution, and it would be the dollar amount we would propose to put on the table, if you will, for the fire department.
And I wasn't at the meeting last night, and I'm assuming this is each, so $120,000 for the fire, $120,000 for PD. So we're talking about a quarter million dollars just to get the renderings for these two facilities.
But the concept was that this gets you essentially six renderings, six different choices on the two stretch. I'm sorry.
This is where I got to tell you. This needs to be rewritten, it's not what it says. This clearly says police station. It doesn't mention the fire station.
No, you already approved the fire station, Bill.
All right, but let me finish what my thought is. It seems like this needs a few more wherethes or therefor's stating that what the intent is, is to send out an RFP to solicit input that ultimately, we will select three people that we think are qualified, and therefore, whereas, those three will be paid a fee of $40,000 to develop the, and prepare the conceptual design for the police station. It just seems like there's too many loose ends here, and I almost feel like I'm being asked to write a blank check.
Stuart kind of wanted to wade in, I think, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me mention that we're not, the intent is not to get the cart before the horse, as is kind of described, and as was mentioned, the committee started addressing this approach just last night. Let me describe a little bit more background on the purpose of the two resolutions, the one that's previously been adopted by the city council for fire, and then the one that's proposed for police. And that is that engineering is currently incurring staff costs in preparation of the RFPs. And typically, we will capture those costs as part of the project. And it's been at my insistence that when we're applying or dedicating Pepsi settlement proceeds towards any purpose, that we have direction from the council to do that. So that's why I brought these forward. They didn't really come, well, they came to the city council at my initiative, because we were using staff time and committing staff time at this point in development of the request for proposals. And those are costs, engineering costs, that the city is incurring that should appropriately be applied to a project. And so in order for me to establish those line item project costs in the budget, I prefer authorization from the city council on the funding source, which is the Pepsi settlement proceeds. Now, as Councilor Coburn is describing, with the discussion last night from the committee and the direction that's being proposed for the police station, that's being expanded beyond the scope of the original intention of both resolutions. So the intent was to get authorization from the council for public safety facilities projects, as the council had previously adopted, with a specific purpose for development of these requests for proposals, and then having authorization for the commitment of the staff time in the development of those proposals. So that background hopefully will help, and that maybe we need a separate resolution or direction if we're going to talk about a dollar amount for specific purposes other than what I had stated and was the original intent.
Well, might we resolve Councilor Coburn's concern, which I think is also appropriate, if we had an understanding that the RFPs would come to the council and be reviewed and approved by the council before they would go out? At this point, they're being reviewed solely by the committee, which really has no legal standing to issue these RFPs. So the request, the committee's going to essentially recommend these RFPs when they get done talking to us, probably on June 10th. Then they would come back to you. You look at the request for proposal. You look at how they're structured. You look at the dollar amounts that are set forth for the projects, for the work. And if you are comfortable, you direct staff to send them out. If you're not comfortable, you change them. Because, you know, with all due respect to the work that our partners in the committee are doing, they're making a recommendation to you, but you guys are driving the bus. And every decision that gets made by the city is your decision. And so the clear way to resolve this, and it's really the only clear way to issue the request for proposals, is if you, the council, are comfortable with them. And that will have the dollar amounts in them, it'll have the procedures. And if you, for example, say, no, I don't want to put 40 on the table, I want to put 30, or you say, no, I don't think 40's enough, I want to put 50, those are decisions that you will make with a recommendation from the committee and recommendations from staff.
Thank you, Bill.
Well, and I'm comfortable with that, and I think Stuart made a good point, that this concept of picking three architects and paying them $40,000 each was not part of the fire station. And it just came up last night, and we heard, I read it in the paper, and then we saw it tonight. So I think there is an opportunity. I have not seen the RFP for the fire station. I think Floyd had an advanced copy or something.
Well, there's only been a draft creatively, yeah.
But again, I don't think there's any question. You have to be the ones to issue it. You have to, not only just rubber stamp it, you got to look at it and see if that's what you want. You get a recommendation, but you got to decide it. And so you don't need to worry, really, about how much money's going to be spent on these things, because you're going to make that decision at a later date. So all this is doing is giving Stuart authorization to bill the cost of what he's doing now to that Pepsi settlement fund. And if you don't go the route with the three proposals, then you will have kind of a blank check. It might be a lower check than $120,000, but it might not, because what you will have to do is select an architect, under the state law, select an architect, the architect then gives you proposed, well, then you negotiate with him on what a proposed design will cost, and then he gives you a design. If you don't like the design, you've kind of sunk your money into a design you didn't like. And that's what I think the committee and Mr. Riles is trying to suggest we avoid.
Okay, is that it, Bill? Okay, Bessie, did you still have something or a question?
Well, yeah, I just want to make sure that we don't tie the hands of the committee and get the cart before the horse. I mean, we're already talking about when we're going to put on the ballot and this like that, and this is what the people wanted us to stay away from until they were ready to, you know, present it for that. We're not there yet, and I don't want to have the public get the wrong idea that, okay, you guys are here now, you've almost got it done, but not quite, so now we're going to tell you what to do. That's not what I want to get across. I want to make sure that we don't tie their hands, we don't get our fingers into the pot until it's time.
And I appreciate your comment very much, and don't worry. One thing about this committee is, well, I find none of us are bashful.
All right.
We've appreciated the support of the council and the hands-off approach, and one of the things that probably comes up every meeting is we remind ourselves, we're not hiring anybody, we're not building anything, we're not, all we are is recommending to you, and you are the final decision makers. We get it.
Thank you. We appreciate that. We're the ones that'll take the heat over whatever decision there is. Yeah, so you remember those days, but, yeah. Ray, and then Floyd.
Well, I guess the cynic in me is thinking, as I'm looking at this three RFP thing, we're guaranteeing that two of the firms are going to walk away with $40,000, knowing that full wealth, they don't have a shot at it then. And so the advantage of doing that, I'm trying, why are we spending that $80,000 if one of them for $40,000 is going to get the bid?
Because they do the work.
First of all, it's not a bid. Be careful, because bid in professional service... They're getting the recommendation.
What you're buying are different ideas.
No, I think perhaps if you, the way I wrap my head around it, in my layman's way of thinking, is that in the traditional RFP process, we ask actually for both projects for three phases. At the end of the first phase, you would have schematic drawings and elevations and detailed cost proposals and everything that we think that, you know, our voters need to see and hear and understand before they vote on it. And the next two phases would take them into the actual construction documents and, you know, everything else to actually build the building. And, but in order to do the first, the traditional way, it's as Jim has described, we ask for proposal from people, and they send the glamorous, white-haired, smooth-talking devil to come and pitch their, sorry, Bill, their firm, the front man or woman. And, you know, all we end up with was our best guess, is this really the right firm? Do they really know what Albany wants? Do they really know where we're headed? And then, after we say, okay, you're our number one choice, then you finally get to ask them, okay, now that you already know you're who we want, how much do you want us to pay you? And then, after we, you, I said, keep saying we, when you get that contract signed, they go off and finish phase one, giving all those, and it's like Jim said, if we've guessed wrong, and that we don't like, you don't like, we don't like what they've done, then you're kind of up the creek. It's kind of too late. Plus, by that point, it's really hard to unring the bell, because they're pretty much assured of going on to phase two and three. If you want to stop them right now, fire that firm and start all over again, now you've got lots of money sunk into that.
So we're getting three phase ones, effectively, is what you're...
Exactly. That's exactly right. We're getting three phase ones for what we think is probably in the ballpark we would have paid anyway when we were under... have paid anyway when we were under hostage negotiation, you know, in the traditional way. And we can take, they'll look at all three and use that as a, as a bargain. Now, okay, now you know that we like your design, you've got it. But we like this one too, so now, tell us what your price is.
Two and three.
For two.
We've paid for the other two.
Yes, they're yours. You own them.
The risk in this process is, if you look at the document and the deliverables, forty thousand dollars won't cover that cost. Because we're talking about site-specific surveying, engineering, you know, to get to that detailed cost analysis. So the question from the architect or engineer is gonna look at this and say, "Okay, do I invest more money and actually give deliverables to get to that next stage where I capture the services contract?" That's the risk. Because there's some pretty serious things in there that we would, City of Albany would expect to have come back from these engineering consulting firms.
So we do all this, we spend all this, and then we go to the voters.
Right.
Oh, yes, yeah, we, after you've got those drawings, this is what we, we think the building, you know, is gonna be, this is, we know where we're headed, then we can present that to the voters and say, "We got it."
Floyd, and then Wes, or did you?
Let Wes go first.
I was just gonna follow up on Frank's comment, because I think it's really important to recognize that, the risks that he talked about, that there may not be a firm, I mean, for one, in talking with architects, what I'm hearing is that they're increasingly busy right now. This would be a great scheme in an environment where architects are really hungry for this kind of a project, and they're willing to risk resources. Whether they're willing to do it now is an open question. And then the other question is, would anybody that's got experience in doing these kinds of facilities be willing to do it now? I mean, or do they have enough, you know, are there another, other things on their, on their plate? I mean, it may work, I mean, it could be, you know, you might inspire people, and they might say, "Oh, yeah, it's, you know, the loss isn't so great that we're willing to take the risk." But you could put out your request and find out that you get no firms that really meet your, you know, what you're looking for.
Another way to look at that, too, if I may, sorry. In fact, there's debate about how hungry the architectural firms are right now. We're getting other feedback that maybe some of them are hungry, and this is not a bad time. I don't know who's right. But the flip side is, we might, again, there's this balancing that we don't, nobody knows for sure, but you, we might end up with some smaller firms that would do a tremendous job that are willing to go forward with this, where they would not even bother if you've got all the big guys on the block proposing under the traditional manner. The committee toured the SIO station, that fire station that was completed within the last year, I guess. Very impressed, extremely impressed with their building. I talked about it last time, and it was designed, I think, by one man shop out of Eugene, a very small firm, if not one man. So, you know, one of the things that very well might happen with this, this design competition is that you could have a small shop that then partners with a construction firm, contracting firm, to work together, you know, like a design build. And, and so partner up and have the resources in that manner.
I like the approach that the committee's taken. I hadn't thought about that before I heard about it. The more I think about it, the more I like it, because I think it does provide flexibility, and I think it will provide us the ability to have a better deliverable to the public. And they'll know exactly what they're getting, and we're gonna get the opportunity to choose the best of all the proposals. I think the way to approach Bill's concern about the resolution is that the resolution for the Fire Department was similar and parallel. We go ahead and move on this one. When they come back to us with their recommendations, after they've viewed the draft RFP, then we have another resolution that incorporates the authorization for the funding. And that keeps it parallel, simple, and then we're not jumping ahead of them, presupposing that they're, that's what they're gonna tell us, although they're telling us that verbally. Let them have the opportunity to flesh it out, make any modifications, and bring it back to us, and then we adopt a final resolution. So, I guess with that, I would move adoption.
Before you, I've gotta have one caution I've gotta give you. I think it's a great idea that Bill came up with to do it this way. I think it is creative. I think it is outside of the normal customary statutory box. The statutory box says you select someone based on qualifications, and then, after you've selected, you negotiate a price. This, also, many of the virtues you've discussed here are not what the architects lobby had in mind when they got that law passed. I was asked by the committee last night if I thought it was defensible and legal, and I said, "Yes." That's not the same thing as saying I have a line of precedent to rely on. So I don't think it would be challenged. I think architects, if they didn't like it, simply wouldn't put in. But I have to tell you, there is always the possibility of challenge, because it is not the established path. Again, I think we would prevail, but I don't have a lot to back that up with at this point. I just had to give you that qualitative. I don't think you need to make that decision tonight. I think you're really just limited to this issue about the funding, but since you've talked so much about it, I want you to know that is still legally uncertain in that regard.
As always, I appreciate Jim's input. Sometimes I'm willing to take the risk, sometimes I'm not, in this case, I am. I move the resolution on page twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, all right. Motion's been made in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
Thank you, Senator.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much for your input.
Thank you very much.
Extend our appreciation to the committee, please.
Yes, please do.
Okay, with that, we're gonna go back to item number two, and this is a resolution that's on page eighteen, counsel. And Stuart, did you have any comments on this one?
We went through an RFP process for investment advisory services. We've had a contract the past six years with David Fix Income Management. They've had some internal changes. So we went through a competitive process to review the contract going forward and receive two proposals from very qualified firms. I wanna mention, the City of Corvallis participated with the City of Albany in the review of the proposals and in the selection process, and intends to use the cooperative purchasing language in our contract to negotiate a similar contract for City of Corvallis. I'll be happy to reply to any questions you might have.
Okay, all right.
Move for adoption of the resolution?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Okay, counsel, you've got adoption of the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion unless you have any items that you'd like to have pulled off for discussion.
Move for adoption of the consent calendar?
Actually, 3B.
3B?
Minus 3B.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, 3B, that's on page thirty-six. And counselor, what was your question?
Question is, is this for kind of fundraising, so they have cheese and wine, or is this a, going to be an ongoing where they would, every Friday night, have a bash at the carousel? I mean, quote unquote.
My understanding is that they simply want to be able to sell bottles of wine as a fundraiser, not that they're going to have...
No consumption.
Yeah, they're not serving it, at least that's my understanding.
I have a little insight to it, only because my sister's on the committee. But as I understand it, there is a vineyard, I believe it's a local vineyard, who offered to label their wine with some carousel theme and picture the animal and so forth, with the intent that the carousel could sell the wine as a fundraiser. And so they had, previously had an auction to where two people could buy that privilege, if you will. And one individual actually bought both privileges, because he has two animals on the carousel. So that's my understanding, is the vineyard will bottle the wine, put on two separate labels, and it'll be sold down there at the carousel as an ongoing fundraiser.
Well, with that, move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, next is on page forty. This is a word of bid for pipe bursting projects.
This, this project is some of our efforts there to address our sewer pipes that are in the worst shape. And we actually took two, two projects, well, they're identified separately in the budget, the pipe bursting and the open trench replacement. We do try and do pipe bursting or lining of projects that we can do. They're usually less expensive, and they're less obtrusive to the street and/or backyards of people. So we limit the open trench construction only to those places that will not lend themselves to pipe bursting or lining. But anyway, we combined those two projects into one for economy of scale, and you'll see that we are slightly over budget. If you add in our contingency, about twenty-five thousand dollars over budget, if you take out the contingency, we're at seven thousand four hundred dollars over budget. The primary driver for that was a change in the scope of the open trench, rather than replacing that in its existing backyard location. We decided to move that out to the street because of two things, the impact to the backyards during construction, and also just continued access for maintenance purposes. So with that, I could entertain any questions you have.
Okay. None? All right, what would you like to do, counsel? Decide them.
Authorization for requested action, or bid.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next is business from the council. Rich, anything this evening?
No.
Ray?
No.
And then Floyd?
No, I was just running some numbers on the bids, and, you know, we're running between two hundred and two hundred and forty bucks a foot to replace sewers. In my memory, it used to be like three dollars a diameter inch to replace sewers, eight inch, you know, would've been twenty-five bucks plus materials. It shows you what construction costs are doing and why we, you know, we're looking at big dollar values on projects.
In those days, I used to work for a buck thirty-four an hour.
Well, that's probably what you were worth.
It was slowy, too, wasn't it?
I mean, it's just, it's a reflection of the price of doing, having sewers, and it really reflects with the tremendous backlog that we have with the sewer systems in this town, you know, the financial burden that we're gonna be looking at for infrastructure.
Also would reflect the changing set of rules that we have to deal with.
Sure.
Regulations that we have to abide by. That's all.
All right, all right, Bessie? Anything? No, Bill?
We have a meeting Monday night at seven, is that correct?
Actually, you have five, five o'clock is the land use training one. Five fifteen, and then seven o'clock would be with the second-hand dealers. And both, both meetings will be here. I will not be able to be here till, probably closer till seven-thirty. I have a dinner with some Albany, Australia folks coming to visit, so, and they've had it on my calendar for six months, so I figured they set precedent over these two meetings, so I will make the second-hand dealer wine as soon as I can get there. But, but other words, I'll, I'll miss for sure the, the five o'clock.
Would the council like us to provide something to eat, since you have back-to-back meetings?
Council probably would like that. Just don't plan on that for me, so I'll be already at that dinner.
We'll provide that, then.
But at least is, is all the council gonna be there for both meetings?
I am.
On, on Monday?
If you come, we'll feed you.
So you'll wanna get for, for six, yeah.
That'd be good.
And the, and the staff that needs to stay for both, if they're a part of both.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we do.
The other thing, I know there was some discussion tonight about construction costs going up. I think it's more seasonal than economic recovery, although it's, it's some of both, but in my opinion, more seasonal. As evidenced, I can, I can relate specifically to the number of hours electricians are working in this area, and they're down from, from last year. The other thing is, up in the Portland area, what's been driving that whole economy is all the work at Intel. And Intel has finished some of their buildings and decided not to put some of the tools in there. And there's a little ripple, ripple of fear going through the community, because a lot of the trades had all their eggs in one basket. And that was a big chunk of the economy up there. So that will certainly be felt, you know, mostly in Portland, but certainly down here in the valley, because there were a lot of people working up there. So I think the same old story is true, that anything you can get out for bid, you know, late fall, early winter, late winter, that, you know, that four- or five-month window, you'll typically see some better bids. So, I mean, it's true, I think that costs are creeping up a little, and the longer we wait, the more they will go up. But I don't think that's a cause or a reason to panic and rush getting to the voters and getting this designed and getting under, you know, construction. That's it?
Good information. Okay, all right, Dick?
Yeah. We had a nice casual meeting with the ODOT people the other day, and I thought the plan they presented was just awful, just awful. And didn't wanna say that at the time, but the more I think about it, the more I feel that way. Now, am I right that we get to give our approval or disapproval of that plan before it goes ahead? Am I under the impression that we...
You would have to agree to amend the TSP to be consistent with the plan that ODOT puts forward with their environmental assessment. If you do not approve amendment of the TSP, then their environmental assessment cannot be adopted through their process, because they, they need, our TSP and their plan have to line up.
Okay, and our TSP does not line up at the present time?
Currently, it does not show the...
Bryce Road.
Right, the cul-de-sac of Airport Road.
Rich's pork chops, or the dead ending of Airport Road.
Right.
Cul-de-sac of Airport, Airport. I can't, if, if that, if that ODOT plan goes through, somebody comes to Albany trying to find the fairgrounds.
Oh.
How long would they look before they manage to find a way into the fairgrounds, I wonder?
Yeah.
Because if they get off by mistake and get into downtown Albany, and then try and find their way to the fairgrounds.
Yeah, I, I think the, the challenge there in what ODOT, I apologize, I had to leave early to go to the planning commission, but I'm not sure if they communicated it clearly. The driver for potentially cul-de-sacking that Airport Road was the issues they would run into with social justice in trying to get access through or across the manufactured home park there on the south end of Airport Road. That doesn't mean there aren't other options to consider, and I can't talk to, or speak to the limitations there that ODOT has, has looked at, but that is a challenge that is, that's what was driving their recommendation for that cul-de-sac. I think it's important, if, if that is a no-starter for the council, that that get clearly communicated to ODOT. And again, not being at the end of the meeting, I don't know what was communicated to them, but if that is a no-starter...
They were glad they came, and it was nice to talk to them.
Okay.
They clearly know our sentiments when we met with them, so I think they, they know, but, so was, they presented this to the act, then, Area Commission on Transportation, Dick, the meeting you were talking about?
No, I'm just sorry about the meeting we had with ODOT.
Oh, what, we had, yeah. Mm-hmm. So, no, they, they come back with that same plan... So, no, they, they come back with that same plan, I think they're going to know it's not going anywhere, so.
So, I guess I'm thinking that we, as a council, ought to talk about some before they come back, whether we, whether we like those pork chops, whether we like the cul-de-sac.
I think the process is, is they're going to be taking, they're going to be going out for public comments, and we need to make sure that we're there, too, for that public comment. And mostly, if it ends up being, you know, get the neighborhood from Airport Road, also get the hotelers involved at Long Price Road or the commercial area, so.
I took beating around the head in church a week ago about that plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure, and I had a brief conversation with Amy Ramsdale today at the MPO meeting. After thinking about our comments and what Rich brought up, and she was reflecting on it, she really believes that the showing of the pork chops for the right-in, right-out only are really a function of the access management plan, and the access management plan comes several years down the road, where they could identify offset mitigations, like extending Commercial Way or extending Blue Ox. And so, I think what she's going to be recommending, that those come out of the conceptual plan, the pork chops, still leaves the issue of Airport Road to deal with. So, I think she very clearly heard you, and they reflected on it, and they think they got ahead of themselves on the pork chops.
Well, I, I thought I growled enough, but not too much.
Was, did you discuss Fescue being southbound only?
No, she did not raise Fescue, she raised Price and Commercial, but Fescue would.
That's another big issue.
Seemed to follow, fall in the same issue with the northbound traffic.
Yeah, I was going to say, Rich, that, that might be your solution to getting Commercial Way done, because people would go down past Price Road, and then they'd go into Commercial and turn around and come on in and go into Price Road, see, so you could get that road done.
I bet they wouldn't.
I don't know, it's an idea.
Because in a couple of years, the corner is going to be gravel.
Oh, yeah.
It's already, it's already breaking up. It's already breaking up, oh.
Well, maybe we should limit the loads.
Yeah, we should do that. I'll get those forty-nine businesses to come by your house.
Okay, so, anything else, Dick? Is that it? Okay. I had an item, but since it's late, I'll bring it up at our next work session. Marilyn, just don't let me forget about it, please. So, next, we, or Wes, did you have anything?
No.
Okay, staff, have anything else? Okay, don't forget, we have Budget Committee tomorrow night, so we have another meeting, and then, so yes, we have the two on June second, work session June ninth, and our regular session is June eleventh. So, with that, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.